Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the council, initial council meeting. It is Wednesday, October 16th, 2019. It is 7:02 PM. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. Are there any questions? Sorry? It's okay. Mine wasn't working either. Just talk loud.
Yeah. I'll go with the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Um, we'll move on to open forum. Is there anyone in the public, or anyone from the public here this evening that who would like to speak and bring up any concerns that are not on the agenda tonight? Terry, can you see through all the people to the back? How's the look?
I think we're good.
Okay. Hearing none. Um, we will move on to item C2, and that is the pickery.
Pickery?
Pickery. Pickle factory update. Terry, would you like to, you gonna do that? Jenny?
Yeah.
We got a video. And we are getting so professional with this fantastic.
Okay. I just want to thank you guys for all being here tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we came just because we wanted to see your new presentation.
This is good. Well, I think, um, when you go up to a bar or a restaurant or whatever, uh, first impressions make a big deal. So, um, looking at this, um, special thanks to Tom Blommer and his maintenance crew and everything. Um, Tom plants all the flowers and everything in the spring and, uh, uh, they make the outside look really, really nice with the mowing and everything. And then, uh, Terry Hansen's not here tonight either, but I want to thank him for, uh, taking care of all the mosquitoes with the spring and everything. Um, we're probably one of the only patios in quite a wa, quite an area that doesn't have mosquitoes. And that helps out with the baseball team when they're playing, they're not out in the outfield swatting bugs or anything. So, um, yeah, he makes it look really, really nice, and I appreciate that. Hmm? Oh, there I am. There I am. So, here we are, year-to-date, um, nine-hundred-and-ten-thousand, almost nine-hundred-and-eleven-thousand. Um, so with including projections for the next three months, um, and I kept a kind of a low projection, not knowing what Mother Nature's going to do or anything, um, it should be over a million dollars, probably a million eighty-nine thousand for the year. Um, that's all going to depend on, of course, what the weather does and everything like that. Um, the next slide.
How does that compare to, like, say, years past?
I got it right here.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So, here's, here's what years past is. Um, you'll notice that two, 2017 has a, has a slight decrease in it. Uh, 2016 is when you, or when, not you, when we decided to do the Springstead Study, and that was the year that, um, both the pickle and spirits took a hit with their wages. So, that's why there's a, a little, uh, less on the graph for that year. Um, otherwise, there's been a slight increase every year. So, here's a guy running around drinking Mountain Dew on a little scooter.
That's working for him.
It's working for him, but it's also working for us. Um, you always want to, um, see what's working for other bars and municipalities in the state. So, you don't want to just sit there and just be stable, because there's a lot of things going on out there that you want to keep an eye on. Um, this, for instance, the cooler was completely full of mold from beer backsplash when, when you change kegs. So, I had a guy come in, and he cleaned it up really nice. And then you'll see here, on this line here, it's a drain tube. So, every time you change a keg and re-tap it, um, all the extra beer goes into a container. Then you just empty it once or twice a week. So, before, I had a cup sitting there, and it did not look pretty. And so, the health department goes, you know, we got to try something else. So, Travis from, uh, Coors, uh, redid all the lines, and it'll look nice in there. So, here's the community center. Um, decided to take a picture of it at night, just to show you guys what it looks like. And then, this is a photo of the last wedding that we had there. Um, it just goes, goes to show how much you can do with that facility. Um, it's a chance for a couple making, you know, having their reception there, make it their own. And, um, this couple, for instance, um, all the big, the big mugs on the, on the tables are growlers from local breweries and other breweries around the states, and that's what they made their vases out of. So, they had big backs, big acts. They had Gold Ambrury. They had, it looked really, really nice over there. So, with some advice from Jennifer, um, to do some advertising. Um, so, this sign is in the bar, and what it does is it promotes the off-sale. Um, the, the trend for the last year and a half have been high-end bourbons. Uh, you got your Blantons, you've got your George Remus, um, Basil Hayden, Stag Jr., bourbons like that. Most of their costs are between low-end fifties to the almost eighty dollars a bottle. Um, I've got a gentleman that comes in, if not every Friday, every other Friday, and spends between five hundred and seven hundred dollars on bourbon.
Got a lot of friends.
He's got a lot of friends, and he's, he's high up in his business, and I think he uses them as marketing tools for, let's say, top salesman for the week or whatever he does. But it is amazing what people spend on bourbons. It's, it's unbelievable. Also with advertising in the bar, um, I do promotions for our Minnesota teams, the Wild and the Vikings. So, when those, when those games are on, you get a two-dollar Coors Light or Mikolai Tap. And you will see that I have advertising all over in the bar. And it also helps when people come in the bar, they get to see what's on sale, um, or, you know, let's say that bucket, five for fifteen, you can interchange, you can have two ultras, you can have two Mikolai Lights, you can have a premium, you can mix and match however you want to do it. We've got buttons right on the till that has a button special, and then the waitress can identify what goes into that bucket. So, makes it really nice. So, this year, um, I'm sure you've all heard that we've raised a little money, raised a little bit of money for the fire department. So, out of all the municipalities in the state, I think there's two-hundred-and-twenty-four of us, Nisswa was number one in the state. We bought, we beat Audi Dina, we beat Rogers, we beat everybody in the state.
In what capacity? In what capacity?
Raising money for our fire department.
Okay.
Um, I lucked out. I had a really good friend of mine, um, he's got a place over on Camp Lincoln Road. And, uh, we're chatting back and forth, and he goes, uh, so what's your goal? I said, well, my goal is five thousand. He goes, so here. So, he wrote me a check for five thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah. So, I made my goal right away, and then we made another, uh, twenty-four-hundred-and-fifty after that. Plus then, what Brian made down at Spirits, we ended up with, uh, ten thousand four-hundred-and-ten dollars. So, Nancy was enough, nice enough on Monday that, uh, we took a, we took a mock check, like you'd see on the Prices Right, and we went down to Spirits, we brought Jennifer down there and took a photo. So, that'll be in the Country Echo tomorrow, so you guys can all take a look at that. And, um, and then there's, there might be a tidbit in, uh, Rainier Dispatch, she's working on that right now. So, how we stay current?
Congratulations, by the way, on that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, we had our, well, I'll mention it here. Uh, we visit local and non-local liquor establishments. Um, bar's a bar, basically, but if you go into a, like, a small mom-and-pop, they might do things that might seem out of the ordinary, but they're making it. So, it doesn't matter how big your liquor store is or whatever. I'm not the brightest bulb on the tree, and other people are out there with better ideas than I am, so there's more than one way to skin a cat. So, Brian and I, and we brought Ross with us last year, and we toured, toured a bunch of municipalities, um, learned a lot of good ideas on, like, how they, uh, utilize their space in their off-sales. Um, we attend trade shows, and then we participate in the Municipal Beverage Association, the liquor convention every, um, every April that's held over in Alexandria. And then, uh, Brian and I were lucky enough to go to the regional meeting last week up in Bagley. Um, there's twenty-eight of us, twenty-eight managers, and, um, the, there's been a push to put, um, alcohol in grocery stores. And I know, as much as everybody says Ted Shaffer will never do it, well, maybe, maybe not, you know? So, we're working with our legislative people, so that doesn't happen. You know, everybody thought, whoa, Sunday Liquors, you guys are going to make a million dollars. No. What happens is, every sale that you lose on Friday or Saturday, you make up on Sunday, for the most part, but... So, that's what we're doing, trying to keep abreast on those ideas. That's all I have. So, if you guys have any questions or comments?
How many employees?
Do I have?
How many, yeah?
Um, I have four, four full-time, and, uh, this summer was the biggest one of all time. I think we had seventeen at one time. But a lot of it, you know, one would work one day a week or two days a week, and then you have split shifts, you know, during the day and in the evening. But, uh, this time of year, we go right down to a skeleton crew, and there's five of us working, so...
I have a question, Terry, about the off-sale. How did, I've never asked the question, how does that get managed with the staff? I mean, is there certain staff only that deal with the off-sale, or, or does just anybody?
Anybody can ring out there.
Anybody can ring that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Nothing one way or the other, just curious.
Well, it's, it's really, really funny, because, uh, two weeks ago, I'm working in the bar, and this couple's out in the office, and they go, oh, you work out here too? It's like...
Yeah.
It's really funny, you know? It's like, oh, that, yeah.
So, I see a report in here for September. Um, just curious on year-to-date, how, you know, net, net sales or profit are trending?
Um, so, as far as off-sales go...
Or just overall?
Or overall, um, the average profit for a municipality is right around five, five-and-a-half percent, and I think I'm running right around seven-and-a-half.
Okay.
Um, as far as profit in the off-sale, you want to keep it around twenty-six-and-a-half to twenty-seven percent, and, um, I've been running between twenty-eight and thirty-one. But a lot of that has to do with those bourbon sales.
Sure.
Because you use a high markup on those, and...
Right.
It's working really, really well.
Excellent. A comment that, I don't know if anybody else, but last comment I have, Terry, is, and this goes to other staff and Jenny, I think the, I think these, um, updates like this, this presentation tonight, I think it's, I think it's really helpful. I think it's really positive. Um, I, I like it.
We do, too. Brian, Brian got a kick out of it. I mean...
He seemed like he enjoyed it, yeah.
He's so funny, because, you know, when he gets excited, he gets red. You know, he...
I didn't know that.
He doesn't like talking a lot in front of people, you know, but I said, just work it through, you'll be fine, you know, so...
He did good.
Yeah. He did go to the cities today for that tinnitus in his ears, and, um, they gave him a new set of, or a new type of device, that hopefully this works better. He doesn't like putting things in his ears, so those hearing aids aren't going to work, so...
Yeah. But no, I, I really thank you and the other staff that, that, putting these presentations together, so to speak, I think, uh, I don't think it's wasted time at all.
Oh, no.
I just want to be, I just want to give feedback. I think it's excellent.
Well, I think you guys need, you know, you deserve the right to know what's going on over there and, and see where our numbers are at, and, you know, I think it's good for you, so...
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else have anything with that before we move on? Moving on to reports, then. Dee, um, city administrator.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I don't think I have anything beyond items for new business that I can help with tonight, unless there are questions.
Okay, I got my questions answered earlier, so... Okay. Thank you. Anything for Jenny? Moving on, then, I, Dee Two, city attorney, Mr. Pearson, who do you have for us this evening?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Sergeant Schultz tonight, huh? Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Dee Three, uh, city engineer, Mr. Hallen, what do you, do you have anything for us?
One, I am under this, uh, Dee Three, just, uh, update, working with Matt Bell and Crow Wing County on the, some bike trail, you know, the applications he's doing. Crow Wing County asked, did some questions and everything on all the trails along County 77, including Crow Wing, you know, Crow Wing County, Cas County, excuse me. So, just assisting, I say, city staff, if you need requests or information, you know, from, uh, Crow Wing County on that. This is a side of that.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Any questions for Mark? Counsel. Hearing none. New business. Item E1, resolution, accepting donations.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the resolution, accepting donations as presented by staff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E2, resolution establishing a polling place.
Move to adopt the resolution establishing the polling place.
Second.
As Nisswa? Nisswa City Hall?
Yes.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E3, petition to vacate road, applicant Julie Johnson. Somebody want to give, uh, any update?
I can certainly give a, just a brief explanation.
Sure.
Tonight is just, um, for the council to properly declare that we've received a petition and that we want to move forward with, um, noticing and providing the information to adjacent property owners impacted. Um, this is the second one we've received in a short period of time, so, um, I'm grateful for, for our city attorney's help in this process. Um, but, so this would just be to set up public hearing date, which will be November, which would be the same as the other, um, vacation request that we have received, um, along Camp Lincoln Road. So, formality for tonight, unless our city attorney has any questions or concerns. It's the same process we did for the other one.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, anything? Nope. That's fine, I'm just...
I did review this, and yeah, you're just at the stage now where, obviously, you declared a sufficiency of the petition, and it looks like it doesn't meet your statute. Your order, your plan is to go ahead and put it on the calendar for final consideration. I don't think there are, well, we've got some notices that are due, like, you said.
Yes, no, newspaper and all that's being scheduled once we get confirmed of the date of the public hearing, so...
We don't have a public water thing, so we don't have a sixty-day DNR that might be here, when somebody's passed.
Correct, yes. Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I approve the resolution as presented by staff.
Seconded by Mr. Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E4, recommendation from Public Works Committee regarding Hazelwood Drive and Smiley Road South. John, you have anything you want to say, or, I mean, don't, Tom, Jenny, anybody?
Um, this was, and I, I reconfirmed this with API, um, down there. I talked to Dave, the manager of the business. One of the problems they've had with Hazelwood is whenever the road restrictions are on, they can't get stuff in and out, because they, well, without violating the law, because they, it's, the road, the way to the road is, uh, too small for their heavy stuff until the restrictions come off. It is a, it's also, it is zone commercial, plus on the other end, where we're also, you'll see later on, where we're looking at putting sewer in, um, recommending that we do that, there's a lot of heavy haulers that come up and down the road. So, we thought the, if we're going to try and accommodate the businesses on one end, it might be just as easy to make the whole thing, since it's a commercial down there on the east side of Hazelwood. It might just be easier to make that nine-ton and be done with it. Then it can, it can meet the, uh, even the state of Minnesota, when they come in with their plow trucks and stuff, and they're hauling down to their pit, um, that road is really, I mean, you've all been on it, so you know how bad it is. And, um, the cost difference was minimal, so it basically amounts to fixing up the, maybe adding some class five, or adding class five to the road bed is the main, the main cost, so...
So, that's going to happen when we redo Hazelwood?
That would happen when we redo Hazelwood. And the bridge that's going in is, what, twenty? How many tons is the bridge?
Well, it's a different rating, I mean, that's a different rating.
Yeah.
It's an age twenty, so semis can drive it.
Yeah, so...
It's state age, so it has to be state-age standards, so essentially...
But in, in talking to Dave, to the Garage Door Company, the outfit that's there, they get large semis coming in with some really heavy loads all the time, and it would accommodate that, too, so...
Thickness of the asphalt for a nine-ten road is how many inches?
Well, typically, uh, four inches. Like I said, that's one of the things you do, you're going to increase from the three-and-a-half to, you know, two, to four inches of the tumulus, and you're going to increase your tumulus base by, well, two inches. So, you're adding about two-and-a-half inches to your total road base to increase, based on your good soil sands you have here in Nisswa. You have to go from a seven-ton to a nine-ton. If you had very poor, you know, poor gas wells and other things, then you, you actually have to do more. But the, so that's essentially what I talked about first, is, John said, you're adding one, two inches of thickness in your class base, and then, um, and then if you believe that as an additional half inch of your tumulus, you're going four inches of the tumulus versus three-and-a-half.
When is Smiley slotted to be redone?
Well, right now, the city is proposing to do Smiley South, in coordination with a contract that ends in, in 2020.
In, with the intersection?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it may, or after, you know, around that time, but right, the city, this is a joke not to do here in 2019, because the county...
Right.
Took a little longer on their project than they expected.
Got you.
Just out of curiosity, and not that I'm suggesting that should, but did the Public Works Committee at all discuss whether any of that at cost be assessed to commercial businesses to help get them up to...
No. No, we didn't. No. We didn't bring that up. At one point, um, I think the last, I, at, at one point in time, uh, I think API had mentioned that they might be willing to help pay for some of it in front of their area, and that's something that we could have the city, we could have Tom or, or whatever, check with them on. But, um, given that we, you know, we're looking at this road to last for hopefully forty years, um, and we don't know what's going to happen with that area, since it's all commercial and highway frontage, that just seemed prudent to bump it up now, since we're going to be tearing it up, and then we don't have to tear it up later, so...
Yeah, a question, I'll get to it in just a second, Tom. You know, the question that I, or a thought that I have is, do we need to be careful when we make a decision like this, that we don't set a precedent that somebody argues with in the future? Oh, you did that for them, why won't you do it for us? Uh, and I, I don't have any specific example, I'm just bringing it up so that we have a chance to make sure we've discussed it and that we make a good decision before we move forward.
Given the number of, well, for example, the wrecker business on the one end of, um, the, um, auto dealership on the, the auto mechanic, but with the wrecker on the other, on the one end hauling in, uh, moving, they have some large wreckers, he does a lot of semi hauling and whatnot, he can haul the big stuff. And then with what currently exists with the state going up and down that road a lot in the winter and, and whatnot, and then, of course, with API and the people on the other end, um, I think it's a pretty unique situation. Plus, at one point, it was the state highway, but we dug it all up to put sewer in, so anything we would have gained from having it be the old highway base is gone, so, I mean, but it's still, like Mark said, it's good sandy soil and everything. I, you know, to your point, I think that it would have to meet a real similar circumstance. Smiley Road South, same thing. I mean, it's all commercial down there, see it increasing, see it changing, I don't see people building houses on it, um, potentially, um, I mean, I couldn't see doing something like that. Like, why didn't you do that down in Poplar or Burke Street? It's like, nah, don't think it's going to happen.
I think if we were to start looking at assessing for that, we'd have to go through a 429 process, which takes a little while to, to do that.
Right. But that's not necessarily a reason not to do something, but...
That's true. I'm just pointing out that there is a process you have to go through.
Absolutely. Tom?
All I was going to add to, kind of with, tailing on with what John said, uh, we looked at all the frontage roads along 371, and we get a lot of weight violations in the spring, both intentional and non-intentional, and they're not necessarily the business owners, and so, in our eyes, it was wise to upgrade these roads to avoid the damage in the first place, rather than trying to fix a lighter-duty road, where we can't capture all the violators that we have in the spring.
Right. No, I mean, I think it makes, you know, I think it makes good sense, it's prudent, it's smart. I just wanted to have, make sure that we ask all the questions and, so that we don't, a year from now, go, uh, why did we, why did we not, or why did we do that there, and we're now what, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's good that we take a little bigger picture view of everything before we, you know, make decisions and, and move forward. Certainly, you know, I mean, I, no doubt, it probably makes sense to move up, you know, the tonnage up, so...
Just out of curiosity, how much does it change the cost estimate for the projects?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand?
Oh, thirty thousand? Oh, was it there? Yeah. Doc?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we concur with the recommendation of the Public Works Committee to increase Hazelwood Drive and Smiley Road South planning purposes from seven to nine tons.
I'll second. Seconded by Johnson. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Tidbit of information, I was really surprised to hear that the city of Lake Shore, County Road 77, when they redid that, went from nine tons down to seven tons. Seemed a little... Seemed a little strange, but I'm sure they had good reason for it. Item E5, Recommendation from Public Works Committee, Hazelwood Drive Sewer Extension. Tom?
Basically, what this was, like, with the tonnage, we were trying to address some of the concerns we had with Hazelwood and Smiley, being we're going to be going into construction next summer, so we could give Mark clear direction on, on engineering for that, and we never answered the question if we were going to extend sewer down the south, the remaining south part of Hazelwood. So, I brought it up at the Public Works Committee, and we discussed it, and the original option would have put it, I believe, at a $260,000 potential cost, and it had a very deep dig through the hill right where Turners is, to make that work. Mark had come up with another alternative, and I apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but I think it was about half the cost.
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, to, to use step stations instead, so now we don't have to go nearly as deep, and it would accomplish basically the same thing, so...
Have we, has Public Works engaged the citizens to find out what their desire and their, what their needs are down there? What's, what...
I've gotten letters from mechanic shop on there, Turners is, so they're interested in it. We've had several real estate speculative people at the far south end that have asked about it. I haven't heard anything negative about it, I think that there's a general acceptance of it, there being it's mostly commercial.
How about, just like you're asked at the church, have they...
They're already connected.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
So, does it, it goes to the church, or is it kind of, kind of diagonally kitty-corner catch them, sort of?
There's a manhole right at the intersection there, and I think somehow they, I'm not sure exactly how it's laid out, but yeah, I believe it does.
There's only, you know, there's only one house down there, the red house.
Yeah, and I don't know how long that'll remain residence, my guess is eventually that'll become some kind of commercial property.
But is it feasible to do a $120,000 project for three businesses, and...
I think the thing we're looking at is eventually more of that will develop, and where the Commons Drive is, there'll be some interest for sewer down that way.
So, how would we, has there been discussion on how that would be? People would be charged for that?
Well, they would get their connection fee, just like they are. We didn't discuss any kind of an assessment, mostly because in the past, the city hasn't shown much interest in an assessment policy, so I guess it didn't, we didn't go there.
And I, I think for this purpose, we'd, we'd like to see it incorporated into the plans and specs, to see where it really just, where those numbers come together for the bid, assess it one more time to determine if that makes sense. We didn't talk about timing for requiring hookups, or, you know, you know, asking businesses to do that, so I'm assuming we're flexible to some degree.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we just wanted to maybe have the option there, and then evaluate late winter, once we have accurate data for what the cost would be.
Mr. Mayor?
The other thing...
Question. I just, the way this is worded, it says reconstruction plans for a low-pressure force main, and estimate costs $120,000. Is $120 for the plans, or is $120 the estimated cost of the completed project?
It's the cost of the project.
Of what?
Of the project, not the cost to put them in the plans.
So, it, it's the cost to dig and put pipe in the ground?
Yes, yes.
It was just worded, moved.
Where it could be taken either way.
Sure, understood, understood, yeah.
There is also the part that, that Mr. Hallen brought up at the meeting, that we were interested in, happy to hear, that going south from Hazelwood, there's, I know that Bowbergs, for example, have ID plans to do some kind of development in there in the future, build homes or whatever. There's two ways to go, one is down to where Wendy's is and out, and the other one is come back down, and it can come back to this and still function, gravity feed, once it comes to that, so we can catch all that without having to dig the whole road up again, or start digging things up, figuring out what they're going to do down that way. They're probably going to want to have sewer as opposed to septic, maybe they won't, I don't know, but it just gives us better options down the road, so... And I don't know if eventually, I mean, I, I think eventually Hazelwood will go to 77 some day in the future, maybe, I don't know.
We were trying to do the trail through there.
Yeah.
But that didn't, not going to happen, so...
Yeah.
To get a road all the way through there, it could be more feasible.
Well, there, there again, you know, when they, when they go to develop it, they're going to have to have access to those homes, so either those homes are going to be a private association and a private road, or it's going to be a city road, at that point, it's city spec, and, who knows, you know, where you go. Eventually, the airport property will develop at some day and age, and there'll have to be a line probably run there. That's the one thing that the commercial folks that we were talking with stressed, that they really like to see, you know, developers, people really like to see city water and city sewer. Well, city water isn't probably going to happen, but at least the city sewer, and it's close, so, reducing costs for a developer, that can be an enticing thing, too, so...
I'll move that the city council concur with the Public Works Committee and approve the inclusion of planning with the Hazelwood Drive, load reconstruction plans, a low-pressure force main. I intentionally left out the dollar figure.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson.
Does that include the Smiley Road portion, too? South Smiley?
No, we're, that's going to, we're coming back to that next month, so...
Oh, okay.
We haven't vetted that one enough yet.
Oh, okay.
So, a question and clarification that I have, because it can be, make a difference in the future, is, I think, I just think, the word that you used, Don, and I think it was probably what was in here, but this, we are looking, are we looking to do planning for this, or are we looking to find out what the cost is so that we can, because what, seeking, seeking cost is different than planning. I mean, planning down the road can be, well, we're planning for it, you know, we're going for it, so, I mean, I just want clarification to, are we... It sounded to me like what I was hearing was we were looking to find out about cost and so on, versus they're actually planning on doing it.
The request is to add that piece to the project, so we can include that in our bids to get cost, firm cost numbers, and then decide if we want to actually incorporate that into the project or not.
So, we're looking to basically find out the cost?
Yes, by including it in the bid.
Including it into the package for bidding or for pricing for cost.
Yes, yes.
And if we don't like it, we could eliminate that line item.
Yes.
And that's, that was my clarification.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, any other questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item E6, Recommendation from the Public Works Committee Short, Regarding Short Form Agreement Between the City of Nisswa and WSN for Engineering Services.
My understanding from this is that the, the amount listed here includes everything up, up until, and including the bid letting, and it does not include anything after the bid letting. Any construction, engineering that would have to take place would be extra on top of what we're looking at here. Am I correct on that?
Yes, correct.
I mean, this is a, this is, I'm not sure what kind of question this is, but I guess I'm, kind of like, does it really cost $193,000 to design a facility? I mean, it's not my field of expertise, but it seems like a lot of money. So, I need to ask the question.
Yeah, no, we, let's talk about this, you know, your construction right now, we're estimating, you know, like expanded facilities and everything, ask about $4 million. So, you know, from the standpoint of, you know, typically designed projects, you know, I mean, low products, you know, very often, like I said, PFA number that we have in the application is for 6%, all right? You know, from that aspect, so if you take, you know, the, you know, if you take the 6% of $4 million, you're at $240,000. But as I, you know, went over this, you know, turn the eye, if you provision, you know, what's through the cost, and they say, we have survey information available from 2007 to 2012, you know, so there is a number of items that we have available for us, so I went through the cost, but, you know, to do that, and that's all, you know, why I established the number, right, of the $193,000 gift, it's a lot, but actually, it's actually less than 5% of the anticipated, you know, project you are going to construct. Now, is that, you know, you have to go through and see, the construction portion of the project is actually larger than the design portion. I'm not going to, you know, I say that's, you know, in the, in the budget, that's with the PFA, you know, those numbers are in, you know, submitted, and when you go into your official financing and everything, we have to those in form for aid, but I'm, you know, what I'm offering is, you know, the guidelines we came into, and I'll say it's industry standard, you're like, you know, for the design of a product like this, we're basically, it's a 6% number. If you get into a typical mechanical plant, and we're doing a lot of retrofitting, that cost enough, will be up to 10 to 12%. I agree with you, we're laying out irrigation systems, I mean, the pond itself is, you know, we all do their footwork, right, Don? Laying out irrigation systems, you can make woods and fields, because of demand at 8% or 10% design fee per construction. So, I'm down, you know, relative work should be, you know, connect four, four and two quarters to 5% range.
And this is all built into the, the plans anyway, correct?
Thank you, Mark.
Would it be fair to insert a, not to exceed cost?
It's in there.
It's already in there.
Didn't see that.
Yeah.
Motion?
Not to exceed, right there.
I'll make a motion that we accept the short form agreement from WSN for Engineering Services as presented for the wastewater treatment plant facility.
Motion by Ryan, is there a second?
Yeah, we'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hoff. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E7, Recommendation from Public Works Committee Regarding Raridan Excavating Driveway Any additional information, or, Tom, you have anything?
I'm just going to give a quick summary of what that is.
Heard you blew your throat, so I figured you maybe did.
All it is, is we have a resident that's requesting to use city right-of-way that is currently not developed into a road, that would allow them to connect, shoot, I apologize that I have the document in front of me, but at the end of Highland Drive, the little stub road there...
Lowland Lane.
Lowland, thank you. They want to connect to that street, as opposed to the private Pine Street that they're on, and they use currently in the wintertime, they have quite a, it's quite challenging, I guess, to use that street to, to access Highland, so they would, they can make a short connection to Lowland, using right-of-way that we have, and they're going to pay Raridan Construction to make that connection. Basically, it just involves removing a few trees and doing a little bit of grading to make the connection. I don't, they didn't mention whether or not they would be paving their connection, and they're not changing the right-of-way in any way. If we do ever decide to use that right-of-way for city purpose, it would supersede anything that they do. I don't think there's any harm in allowing them to use the right-of-way as a driveway.
Where exactly is this? Trying to...
Do you know where Highland is, up on Upper Roy? If you're going down Upper Roy, it was one of the roads we repaved last year.
If you look at the, where the house is, the two red Xs, that is the, that would be the northwest edge of Nisswa Lake, as you're going into the Roy Channel, Nisswa-Roy Channel.
Okay, got it.
North Peninsula, or...
Got it, okay. So, just like, so this would just be, they would just do kind of the way they, they want to do it, so to speak, would it be up to city specs?
No, it would be maintained by us or anything like that. All it is, is we have a right, an existing right-of-way there, they want to place a driveway over the top of it, because we're not using it, there's just trees growing up in it. It was just a simple way for them to connect to Lowland, which is a newly paved street, gives them a easy way in and out in the wintertime.
Sure.
Does that Pine Street go out to 371?
No, well, I don't, as far as I know, it curves back, and, you know, it's like this, and it's narrow, it's, it's, it's a goat path.
Yeah.
And it ties back into Highland about halfway down. Best way I can describe it is if you're going down Highland and you see, there's those little white signs with all the names of residents there, one of them says Draving, I think, I can't remember some of the other names that are on that thing, that's where it connects, right there.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to agree with the Public Works Committee Regarding the Raridan Excavating Driveway Extension, subject to the property owner signing a whole harmless letter clause with the city.
Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question, is that something you can help me with?
Yeah, you asked me about, because I'm sorry, you asked me a few weeks ago about this, I think I gave you the fact that we should do some sort of short agreement with these people that...
Okay.
That allows us to terminate this if we need to, cover liability, cover maintenance, like...
Sure.
...agreement, but it wouldn't be that, because it is a right-of-way.
Right.
So, put together some kind of right-of-way agreement with the property owner.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I did ask, ask Raridan to talk to the homeowner and see if they could make an arrangement, possibly with one of their neighbors, to come through their property to make this connection. Our right-of-way kind of parallels other properties there. I haven't talked to them since, so I don't know if that's a go or not for them, but I, this would be probably a better option.
Yes, it's fine, we can just, if the motion is made to be subject to an agreement, they won't have, they'll put together and we'll send it over.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, we're adding that to the motion?
It was in the motion.
Oh, it was in the motion, okay. Sorry about that. My apologies. Any other questions or clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E8, Recommendation from Public Works Committee Regarding Final Payment, Application from Knife River for 2018 Road Improvements.
Roads we were just talking about are part of those improvements, and this was a portion that's withheld, allowing for completion of the project. As far as Mark and I have reviewed with Knife River, and we believe that everything is done to our satisfaction, we're recommending final payment be made.
Okay. Is this full and final, or is there any retention that goes out of ways, or anything, or...
No, this is, this is the retention.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Counsel?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Public Works Committee for the final payment, for an iceberg, for the road, 2018 road improvement.
Second? Seconded by Hoff. Any questions on that motion? Clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item E9, Approve 2020 Squad Car Purchase.
I make the motion that we go ahead and approve the squad car port, ah, purchase for 2020, out of the 2020 budget, as presented. The hybrid engine from Hiving Ford is... The hybrid engine from Hibbing Ford is the one that the police department would prefer to get due to its cost saving in energy, well, cost saving, energy efficiency and from what I understand, it's part electric.
It's what idle, slow speeds, I suppose it's electric and accelerating and bigger speed and it's gas.
No. Could be a Tesla though, it'd get you there really fast as long as you don't run out of battery juice before you get.
That just happened, did you see that?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
In California, yeah.
Well, is that similar to Prius that is self charging, you don't have to plug it in or what?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. The gas, the motor charges the battery as an alternator.
Okay, I got a sidetrack there, so I apologize. So there's a motion?
Correct.
Was there a second, I forget?
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnson. Any questions, clarifications? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a question then, what's going to happen to the old squad car?
Plant flowers in it.
I mean, do we keep it, can somebody in the city use it for, for something or what do we do with it?
Historically, we have put them on gov deals and we have sold them. However, I have had a request to consider keeping a vehicle for staff use, driving to site visits and things like that, so I said depending on, I don't know offhand which vehicle will be the one rotated out, so we'll just consider that. Typically, they're, they sell for 500 to $1,000 maybe, I mean, they're pretty beat up and so they don't have a ton of value, so we wouldn't be recouping a lot and maybe it's worth keeping it, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge and have that conversation and talk about that.
I wouldn't get too, that's going to happen anytime soon, they're still waiting for the 2019 that we ordered about this time last year.
Nice.
Isn't that crazy? They knew it was going to take a while, but even Craig said he didn't think it was going to take quite this long, so.
Just will end up with a whole bunch of brand new ones all at the same time, really different years. Moving right along, E10, recommendation to accept annual performance review and step increase for Jenny Mack, city administrator. Any comments on that before we move forward?
If none, I would move to approve the recommendation to accept the annual performance review and step increase for our city administrator.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I think John was first, if you're wondering, Donna.
Okay.
So we all filled out our reviews for you? Did they, who compiled them and?
I reviewed them.
I reviewed them as well, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious on that, I don't know if we just.
Jenny and Donna.
Turned them into nothing and she's given herself a razor?
Can't fire out back with them. Had a little fire and did, you know, said goodbye to them and.
I appreciate the council's feedback and, and as I do at any time during the year, but it's, it's helpful for me to have a look back opportunity and then look at what, where we want to go for the, for the upcoming year, so I do appreciate it.
I did, in reviewing them, I did find that even though none of us discussed anything about it, we filled them out independently, almost everybody came to almost the same conclusions.
Very similar, yeah, very similar, yeah.
And we still kept her even despite.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the average was over 2.5.
You really don't want your December check, do you?
So we had a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, nays, motion carries. Jenny, thank you very much, keep up the good work. It's a lot of very positive. Hear, hear.
Yeah.
Okay, item E11, recommendation from the liquor committee, pay adjustment for Nancy Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the liquor committee to adjust the pay for Nancy Schmidt.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion does carry. Old business, there is none. Council reports, mayor's report, I don't have anything this evening new to add or share except to say thank you to everybody. Council members, Ryan, we'll start at your end.
Just wanted to say that I went to the open house, the community open house for the fire department and it was interesting, if you guys get a chance. The old jobs of life, you used to have to set the generator on the ground and get it started and then you plugged the hydraulic lines into that and then you had this big bulky thing that took two guys to handle and stuff. Now they're all battery operated, it's amazing where equipment has come. It's, it was really neat, so it was a good time and had a pretty good turnout. And the helicopter even landed.
Cool.
Yeah, but it didn't mess my hair up.
Something messes your hair up, we're in trouble.
Good point. That's all I have.
Councilman Hoff, thank you. John?
I'll make my monthly statement that the Gull Lake Trail Meeting is not happening next month until we get the go ahead from the legacy grant, if that gets approved, which we should here, maybe mid next month.
Which is a little later than.
Yeah.
We were hoping, but.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything to read into that, it's just.
And I know they're working on it, so.
Yeah.
Right.
The fact that we haven't been tossed out is positive, right?
Right. Moving at the pace of the state. Then, was it Thursday night, Jenny Brittany and I went to the chamber community meeting and learned what they want to do for the year, they talked about the road closure for city lights and everybody has a different opinion on that, so. It was an interesting evening, but it's, I think it's, Chamber's in good hands with Holly, I think.
Fantastic.
That's it.
Thank you. Gary, Mr. Johnson, anything?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay.
Not at this, not at this time.
Okay. Well, then we move right along to announcements and upcoming meeting dates. Are there any announcements, Jenny? Or are we just taking in the dates?
Just the dates for tonight. I actually, I'll take that back. I had proposed a workshop on November 20th prior to the regular council meeting and I have not heard from everyone, so I don't know if you're able to check your calendars or want to get back to me, I'll just toss it out there, that looking to talk about the comprehensive plan and prioritize for next year.
I got back to her. I don't know if I did or not, I think I did, but I don't know. I know I don't have a email. Is it me, am I one of them, I don't know, am I? It's fine.
No, and that's, we're always out, I just mentioned it now.
Yeah, no, that's, that works for me.
Okay.
Gary?
Question?
Did I?
No.
I think I, I think there's, there's a reason for that, if there's something work related, I'm looking into it.
You were busy.
That's safe, that's safe.
No.
Just, just kidding, just kidding, just kidding, yeah. Okay, but it sounds like there's a quorum anyway then. And Gary will confirm one way or the other. Okay, very good. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say, a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second that.
Second, all those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, everyone.
Power on the nose.
That, you know, that, that is really one of the quicker ones, isn't it? Not that that's the all important thing, but it, but it actually was.
I didn't want to throw a monkey in the pond.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.